Good evening. I'd like to call the order to the school board meeting for June 6, 2022. Right after the Pledge of Allegiance, we're going to have a moment of silence for all those who lost their lives in the recent tragedy in Texas. And also, school board member Ken Martin is excused this evening. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We want to thank the James Mastercola Upper Elementary School Saxophone Choir. If you all will come forward so your parents can see you up here at the front. We'd like to thank their teacher and director Bunny Serantina. And we would like to thank Ryan Maroney, Tucker Landry, Jacob Gonzalez, Gabriella Bielecki, Asher Reimy, Ally Wyon, Tori Koopa, Boden Walter, and Tom Clancy. Let's give them a hand. Thank you so much. That was wonderful.
Thank you for coming.
We enjoyed it. Very wonderful. What a wonderful way to open up our board meeting tonight. And as we head into summer, it just makes me think baseball season and all the wonderful summer activities. All right, we will move on to public participation. This is a time when the public can come to the microphone. If you would like to say something, come and state your name and your address. If you are a student, you do not need to state your address. You can just state your name and tell us that you are a student. So we open it to the public. All right, seeing none, we will move on to some awesome recognitions tonight.
Well, we're very proud of two teams actually composed of the same members and same coaches. We are here to present a certificate and honor the Granite State Challenge Team and the Quiz Bowl Team. A little bit about both. The Granite State Challenge is a televised competition put on by New Hampshire Public Television. Every year, schools from across New Hampshire compete to even just get on the show before the televised rounds start. Merrimack, with great pride, has qualified for the show for the past nine years, which ranks them among the top fourteen teams in the state annually. In 2020 and '21, Merrimack won the championship. Though most of the team graduated in 2021, we once again put on a strong team. On route to the finals, Merrimack defeated Kingswood in the first round, perennial powerhouse Plymouth in the quarterfinals, and a strong Nashville South team in the semifinal finals. The championship match was against Portsmouth. And though the team came up just short of the championship, they played a strong game, and we couldn't be more proud of their accomplishments. And the Quiz Bowl, many of the same members, and all of the same members, in fact. Merrimack has competed in the New Hampshire Quiz Bowl League since 2013, another team-based trivia competition. Meets are held around the state as teams vie for a spot in the state finals. Each year, the top eight teams make the finals, and Merrimack has been in the finals all but one over the past ten years. This year were several strong contenders for the title, with the four-time defending champions Hanover, the seeming frontrunners. At the championship meet, it all came down to Hanover and Merrimack match, with both teams having defeated the other six teams in the competition. It was a tight match and came down to a tiebreaker, but Merrimack pulled off the victory. And this is the first time that Merrimack has won a New Hampshire Quiz Bowl League championship, and we could not be more proud of you. And we'd like you to come up front to be recognized and receive a year's certificate.
All right, so we are going to start with captain of the team, Jack Pacora. Eris Corman O'Reilly. Ally Pacora. Connor Bobbitt. Rainier Murray. Keishan Sriniwassan. And we want to recognize their coaches. Assistant coach Elizabeth Dumas. And coach Sarah Campbell.
Thank you. Congratulations. We're very proud of you.
Wonderful to see our Merrimack students representing in the state. It's just awesome. All right, we will move on to informational updates to our superintendent update.
Yes, and first, I would like to say that some of us were at the Rotary Club Honor of Dinner on the ten or eleven top graduates. And some of the graduates spoke about Dr. Campbell and Sarah Campbell, about what she meant to them and the extraordinary teachers that she was. So Sarah, I want to say congratulations and thank you for everything you do because you're an extraordinary professional. All right, you know, I have a rather unusual tie on tonight, but I wanted to wear it in honor of the veterans who valiantly fought and lost their lives on Memorial Day, which was just a week after that. But also today is D-Day, which took place in 1944 and was one of the most significant military events in our history. And so those members are the greatest generation, and there may be some in Merrimack. We salute you and honor you. And thank you, both those that we honored during Memorial Day and those who we honor today on D-Day. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and do what we do. So thank you very much. With that, the last day of school, once again, will be the 21st. Two weeks from tomorrow, half-day for students. Student handbooks are being rewritten in totality. Those will be ready for you around mid-July. We are incorporating, we have a team that has been working on them, but at this point in time, we've turned them over to our legal counsel so that the state and federal statutory requirements are incorporated in the handbooks and that we have the proper citations in them. I want to thank the principals for sending over some outstanding staff for hire. I've had some wonderful interviews, people who are passionate about what they do and are not just looking for a job. They want to truly make a difference in the life of a child, and that's what we're looking for. And let's see, I believe that's it. I wanted to keep it relatively brief tonight because we have a long agenda.
Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Thank you very much. We've had a busy month, very, very busy, or busy start to June, anyway. We had Social Studies Committee meeting on curriculum revision last week, and tomorrow we'll have our Science Committee meeting to work on revision. Some really great work happening there. We had our Vision of a Learner meeting, and we have another one June 22nd, and then we have one scheduled for August. And we'll be ready and right on time to deliver a Vision of a Learner statement to the board in September. We would like to do a proposal to have that turned into or out of that work come a mission statement for the district and then eventually a strategic plan. So we will put together a proposal for the board's consideration and would love board participation with all of that work. So we are moving along quite nicely and lots to do with a lot of time. We do have two professional development days for parent educators and professional staff, June 22nd and June 23rd. And those days will be devoted to compliance and safety, for the most part. Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of items under new business, but there's one that I just want to keep in the forefront. The concession stand made possible by the Laura Wolf Foundation, Dr. Bob Wolf, is, it doesn't look like it's, you know, coming along, but it is coming along. You know, it's part of the most important things is getting the foundation set, getting the grades right, getting all the repaving done. And we had to have a couple of meetings there because, you know, you can engineer it all you want, but when you actually put it in place, sometimes things just don't look right. So we had a big meeting. Everything is all set. It's going to be absolutely perfect, and we'll give you updates along the way. And it's going to be a real asset to that area as we've reconstructed it over the years with new bleachers, a new track, new retaining wall, and it's going to look really nice. So it's going to be something that Merrimack can be proud of. So it's underway.
School Board Update.
Oh, sorry. I want to thank the administration for always their quick follow-up. And they're very professional. When something happens in our schools, they respond very quickly, but they're also very proactive. So I think the community should know how hard our administration team is working and the work that they're doing to keep our kids safe.
Student Representative Update.
I just have a few quick things. So this is kind of reminders for students, but mainly parents of students because not many students watch the meetings. But parents of juniors, remind your kids to order their senior T-shirts. That's this week, and they have to do it in Mr. Hall's room before school or after school. For the seniors, make sure that you get your green cards in for all of your senior week activities because if you don't get your field trip cards in, you can't go. So, and then the juniors are having a car wash this weekend. It's on Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:30. And once again, that's Sunday, the 12th, 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 at the Gulf Station by Common Man. So that's all.
Thank you. All right, moving on to old business. As Lori said, there is a pre-meeting that both Lori and I will be having with Primex just to kind of set the parameters for the goals meeting that we'll be having as a board in June. And we have tentatively set that location to be the middle school library. We will also be beginning the groundwork for that mission and vision that's going to go along as we come together in the fall and move towards that strategic plan. So those are the main items under old business regarding that meeting. Any other old business? All right, new business. We have some exciting highlights to hear about tonight.
So we want to welcome Mastercola Elementary School and Reed's Ferry School, Thornton's Ferry School, and J. Muse will be on the tail end. And thank you to all the administrators who have looked to provide you with some highlights from this year's at each of their respective buildings. So I'll let them introduce themselves, and thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. We'd just like to introduce ourselves really quickly. My name is Bonnie Paint Show. I'm the principal of Reed's Ferry Elementary.
Julie DeLuca, principal of Thornton's Ferry School.
And assistant principal at Mastercola Elementary, Alicia Hansen-Pru.
Marshall McGill, the principal of the upper elementary.
Nikki Rowe, the assistant principal at the upper elementary.
So I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to share the amazing work of our students. We're going to start with the lower elementary, and then the upper will take over from there. So we're going to start with Reed's, Mastercola, and Thornton's students. Our theme tonight is about the power of student choice and student voice. This theme aligns with our ongoing efforts to delve deep into UDL and developing flexible learning opportunities and environments for all students. The strength of enhancing student choice and student voice can be seen throughout the UDL framework and guidelines. During our presentation, you will hear from Reed's Ferry students about how they were instrumental in creating two writing clubs and a new school song. Ms. Prue will talk about the benefits of one-to-one devices, and students at Thornton's Ferry will share their experiences with the new Thornton's Ferry Showcase of Learning. So we'll start with Reed's. Excuse me. Reed's Ferry students' voice and choice. Students at Reed's Ferry know that they have a voice, and they can make a difference in their community and their world when they know they have the power to be heard and then do something.
Hi, my name is Charlotte, and I created a writing club called Magic Garden Paper. I wanted to create this club because I love writing and I wanted to share my passion with the other fourth graders. To make this club, my idea happened, I had to write a proposal to Mrs. Paint Show, and it had to include lots of things, like how it would work, where, when, and where it was, and the benefits to support, why it should be accepted, why my club should be accepted. It was accepted, and now on every Monday morning, twenty to twenty-five kids come in and they bring like pencils, notebook, paper, and they write with either a partner or by themselves. And I, I write with my friends, and it really is very, it's very fun.
Now, one student's going to share a little bit of her writing.
Hi, my name is
Hi, my name is Whitney, and I was in the fourth grade writing club, and I want to share a quick example of a story I was writing. There once was a kingdom called Aradia. Aradia was ruled by Emperor Ok. He was kind and loving to his people. Aradia had a neighboring kingdom called Okeech. Okeech was ruled by a cruel emperor named Capiche. These two emperors were brothers, but they were nothing alike. For example, Emperor Ok would always put his people before himself, but Emperor Capiche would leave the whole flock in the dust so he could survive. Emperor Capiche was not always cruel. He once was his brother's best friend. But when he gained power and became emperor, his brother became his worst enemy.
So then a trend was sparked at Reed's, and our third graders want to get involved.
My name is Carla, and I'm Aubrey. We created a PowerPoint to have a third grade writing club. We circulated a petition asking people if they liked the idea of the third grade writing club.
We got a hundred sentences, and you can write with your friends. We got the chance to write with other students in other classes. And you can write freely. You have the option to share your writing during club time. We feel empowered because our voices are heard.
We know that we have a voice and that we can make things happen.
What being a part of a special club board members have the same interests?
We love being able to choose from a large variety of writing styles.
We enjoy writing with a partner, small group, or alone. We learned what it meant to be a member of a club, how to behave, and how to work with others.
So students during persuasive writing really found power in knowing that their voices were heard and things happened. So this is the chorus at Reed's Ferry School who then took leadership.
Everyone, I am Lila.
And I am Eli. We are here to talk about how we wrote the Reed's Ferry song and chorus.
We started with a map where we shared feelings, traditions, and favorite memories of Reed's Ferry. Everyone shared and looked for common ideas.
He's included thinking about our school colors, our school mascot, and our favorite RFS traditions.
Then we discussed different kinds of music and what would make our fun, our RFS song fun. We agreed some rock and rap were popular, that we didn't want anything that wouldn't last. We wanted to create a song that hopefully every RFS student will learn for decades to come.
Finally, we put the whole song together. It took weeks of practice to make sure we had the right alliteration and tone in our voices.
We hope that you enjoy this student-created song.
Sorry, I couldn't find the arrow.
Everyone, I am Lila.
So now, this is our new RFS song.
Reed's Ferry, can you hear me? Check, check, one, two, three. Reed's Ferry, if you're listening, stand up, sing with me. This is where we laugh and play and learn to get along. School pride gets us through the day, that's why we sing this song. Reed's Ferry, RFS stands for Really Fun School. Our grades are the brightest and best, sharp as cool. Reading, writing, math, and gym are in computers too. Music's on its history and still the list continues. We also have blue and white tiger fight inside us. We got like that light so bright, day and night. It's true, it's clear as the sky, way up in the sky. It's going so far, we're flying so high. Face to that, blue and white tiger fight. All our lives will remember tiger fight. Blue and white Reed's Ferry's where it starts. Deep down in our hearts, we know that it's cool. True state of way back, Reed's Ferry's my school.
We're, I know. I think that was, that was the first time that I watched it without crying. So it's because I'm just so proud of them. But they, they took it upon themselves. They asked to do things, and people heard them, and it now is happening. Two new writing clubs, a new school song, and I can't wait to see what else they will do.
So for our presentation for Mastercola Elementary today, we've prepared a PowerPoint on voice and choice through one-to-one devices. Sorry, I'm like leaning over here. We feel so fortunate that we're able to provide a device to each student at this point, from kindergarten through fourth grade. All of our students have access at this point. K through one are able to use iPads. Here we go. And then grades two through four are able to access their Chromebooks, which has definitely given us a leg up in the world of giving choice, having the ability to look at barriers and prepare in advance. So choice is how the students learn or engage with the content, and then also how they're able to demonstrate and show us what they know. As far as their engagement, they're able to participate in a more full, in a more accessible way. It's far more independent than it used to be without access to technology. And we're able to differentiate just about everything at this point. So in consideration of all of our UDL work, teachers really have so many more opportunities at this point in having devices for each student. So our DLS and our LMS, our Digital Learning Specialists and our Library Media Specialists, have been able to push into the classrooms, provide weekly lessons to all students in K through four. We have lots of menus of opportunities for students, lots of chances where, you know, our PD has really given teachers the chance to co-teach together. So our Digital Learning Specialist will go in, especially in the younger grades, and work with the teacher, the classroom teacher. And then the classroom teachers are able to continue to offer engaging work through the use of enhanced technology. So we've also been able to use Canvas. Second through fourth grade, they're really using that platform much more. So we have different levels of reading materials for science, social studies units. And we're recording their reading responses through a different variety, like video, audio, text. So gone are the days when students have to write their responses. They have a choice in what they do to demonstrate how they know something. In addition to that, we've also got differentiated assignments for math at this point, too. So we've got other opportunities where voice and choice comes into play, like our digital escape rooms to practice content. We're accessing the OneDrive in a regular and consistent manner, where kids are playing with Word, Excel, and PowerPoint in a more regular basis. They're receiving direct and timely feedback from their teachers. And we're utilizing the math benchmark assessments in a way that otherwise wouldn't be as user-friendly without all this technology available. So in addition, we've been using apps for independent practice at students' level. We're really able to use technology in the art room and in the specials, too. Even our gym teacher is able to leverage technology at this point. So it's given us just far more opportunities than ever before. Thank you so much. So Showcase of Learning started last year at the same time and during our master schedule committee. And we have over twenty educators that are involved in the development of our master schedule. And the key component of our master schedule is any good schedule is built upon the values and priorities of your school and of the district. And in particular, we're focusing on the engagement guidelines for UDL. And so we really started studying student choice and voice, and how do we engage kids in their learning and leveraging their strengths. So I'm here on behalf of the amazing Unified Arts educators that we have, and I'd like to mention them. And that is Kate Veyance for Art, Denise McLaughlin, our DLS, Sarah Croto, our LMS, Jen Sayward, PE teacher, and Matthew McGuinness, a music teacher. They came forward and created this amazing opportunity that just recently culminating in a highly engaged parent and family community event. We had over two hundred families there and where the students on their own were able to show what they learned. And so I don't have anything more to say because the students will share this in our video. So take it away, Bonnie.
And so I don't have anything more to say because the students will share this in our video, so take it away, Bonnie. That's not the Showcase of Learning. If it was, I would be concerned.
Hi, I'm Brandon.
Hi, my name's Ariel.
Hi, my name's Jake.
I have a few questions for you guys today. What was your favorite part of Friday Showcase Days?
My favorite part about Showcase was seeing how creative other people were.
Each student has something unique and amazing to show off. On Fridays throughout the year, each UA educator offered a five-week course in their area of expertise or interest. Key learning objectives were exploration, collaboration, and creation, truly focusing on process over product.
My favorite thing was art.
My favorite thing was art.
My favorite thing was art.
I would explain it that if you look at somebody's artwork and they're doing something that you really like, you could get inspired by it.
My favorite thing about Showcase of Learning was art. I got to get creative, make like stuff out of cardboard, and explore in art.
I probably explain it like it's something on Fridays where you come in, you will go to whatever showcase you chose, and then you can do it if it's like yoga or just making anything in art class. It's got to, it's really fun.
My favorite thing about Showcase was everything.
My favorite showcase option was a studio day.
PE, you usually like do like stuff like exercises and stuff. But one time they did a create your own game with you tour. So it was different from what you might normally do in PE.
My favorite thing about Showcase is the PE create your own game.
PE, I liked when you got to pick your own like game you had to create. And I created a game with some of my friends and like it was really fun. And I think PE was really fun.
My favorite thing about library is that we get to make our own books.
Favorite thing was quarters.
What I like about Showcase of Learning is chorus.
My favorite thing about Showcase of Learning is chorus.
My favorite thing about Showcase was chorus.
And my favorite part of Showcase of Learning was the cozy chorus. It was fun to bring one of my favorite stuffed animals in into chorus while singing.
My favorite thing about Showcase is singing.
My favorite thing is cleaning up all of the nature twas in the golden.
And my favorite thing about Showcase of Learning was reading theater and get to see all the art projects and what the specialist teacher put together.
My favorite thing about Showcase was that I got to perform in front of the kindergarteners for Reader's Theater and Showcase Night.
My favorite thing about Showcase of Learning was the stop motion in art. I liked how I got to use all these different types of materials. And I liked how I got to make my own stuff with other people. And that's what I like about art and the Showcase of Learning.
About the Showcase of Learning, what I liked about it was my stop motion because it was fun. It wasn't all that complicated, even though it was a little. And it was fun to do so other people couldn't see what I made.
Thing about Showcase was playing board games.
My favorite thing about Showcase is playing chess.
My favorite part of Showcase is using technology to help me.
And also in computer class, we got to go on to other websites and one had to code. It was one of my favorites, and I liked it, the experience because of how fun it was. And I loved Showcase of Learning.
My favorite thing about Showcase of Learning was when I made the wings. And they were really fun to make because I could use all these materials and figure out different ways to do it.
Thing about Showcase was everything.
My favorite thing about the Showcase of Learning is chorus, and I love. I want to say a big thank you to them for putting this together for us.
I think that's it. Do you have any questions for us at this time?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say what an awesome job. I think that's, all of that is so fantastic from, like, that Reed's Ferry song was awesome. I'm a Reed's Ferry graduate, so I really love that. And just seeing the one-to-one devices used and utilized in a meaningful way. I guess we can count that as a gift of the pandemic, right? There aren't many, so we're glad to have that. And I hear about Showcase of Learning all the time at my house. I was like, Fridays are Showcase of Learning, Mom! And I'm like, oh yeah, that's right. So, and my child is enjoying it immensely. So just thank you for all that you do to give students choice and voice. It's really cool to see a glimpse of what they're doing. I mean, obviously, I know what's happening at Thorntons Ferry, but to see what the other schools are doing is fantastic. So thank you for being here tonight.
And I will tag on and totally agree with Jenna. I love the Showcase of Learning, all the different ways that the students get to experience art and technology and just that exposure in ways that, you know, we never had growing up. And it's just so exciting to see their excitement. And I'm sure there were students who discovered talents and skills they didn't know they had through that. So that was, that was wonderful. Thank you.
I'm just going to finally say, so we always talk about evidence, and we're always looking for evidence. And I say evidence and results all the time. So when we see these demonstrations and they show high levels of creativity and intellectual sophistication, and those are the results, those are the skills we want our kids to know. So it's deeply appreciated to actually see that, you know, evidence and results.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll move to Jay Muse.
Good evening.
Hello.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity this evening to share with you a little bit about voice and choice at the Upper Elementary School. As you may even know, I'm Marsha McGil, the principal, and I have with me here Dr. Nicole Rowe, our assistant principal. And we want to share a little bit of the activities that are going on in our school. First activity we have to share is, we'll go through this until we get there. It has a mind of its own. I can't get it to move. Yes. Oh, it's separate. Thank you.
You know, these are the times when you try presentations at like three or four o'clock in the afternoon, they work beautifully. And now when you get into the school.
No, no, we have those. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so student voice and choice at the Upper El.
We'd like to start first with an activity, which was a collaboration between our Library Media Specialists, our Digital Learning Specialists, and classroom teachers. And it was a screen, green screen activities. Students were able to choose what activity or what colonies they wanted to research, and then how they wanted to display their learning. This particular example is a student who chose to have a camper travel back in time to the New England colonies. This person, this camper, met a Native American in Connecticut, a blacksmith in New Hampshire, a fisherman in Massachusetts, and Roger Williams in Rhode Island. So just an example of their green screen. And you can see the children there in front of the colonial times.
This really was a multifaceted project. Once they determined that they wanted to use the green screen, they had to prepare. And so they created a planning board, they wrote a script, they created whatever props that they needed. They filmed it, and then they had the opportunity to edit it to make it just right. So it was really a complex project that had a fantastic outcome. This next one's really interesting. This is voice and choice in art. And art really is all about voice and choice. If you take a look at this slide, these different representations of art are the same final project for students. So up on the top, you see a paper mache breakfast. Down below that, you see a gumball machine that's all stitched together, and then a drawing of some donuts and some coffee. So they have voice and choice throughout. They're taught to brainstorm ideas, plan, experiment with materials, reflect on their ideas, and revise their work to become independent thinkers and problem solvers. So the sixth grade independent project is the culminating project that truly showcases their growth and learning in art throughout the two years that they're with us.
This next is an example of goal setting in the classroom. This is a fifth grade teacher who employs a variety of UDL, you know, activities in the classroom. At the end of each month, students have an opportunity to reflect on their learning. They can choose to write a letter to themselves, or they might fill out a reflection form. Also, they save their work, and the parents are able to see their portfolios in the spring. So it's a nice way for children to showcase their own work. And it's a, you know, copulation of their work, you know, that goes home at the end of the school year. And it just shows all the different things that they've done throughout the year.
I think one of the things that's most interesting about this is that the teacher works with the students to determine what is a valuable piece of work. And it's hard to read on the purple sticky note, but she asks the students to reflect on the pieces that they choose. One, to hang up, that's something that they're proud of, and then two, another piece to put in their portfolio. And this one says, "I had to keep trying and trying." "I had to keep trying over and over, but I ended up getting most of this right." And so that's why the student put this assignment in, because it was tough, but it was something that they were able to be successful in after really working diligently on it.
Also, the portfolios that they put together really gave them an opportunity to, like I said before, showcase their work and to really show themselves as expert learners.
Something very fun that we teach in fifth grade is figurative language. And you learn it and you know it, and then all of a sudden you get to seventh or eighth grade and you say, oh wait, what was automoneopia? What was alliteration? What were idioms? I promise you, these children are never going to forget because they had opportunities to really play along with the language. So this was one very quick activity that the teacher said, okay, tomorrow everyone's going to come and dress like their favorite idiom. And so you can see up, up in the corner on the left, you have break a leg. In the middle, it's starry-eyed, and the student has like a big starry glasses on. Below that is a heart of gold, thinking beyond the box, right on the far right downward left, and then our downward right, and then two peas in a pod. So they will remember that.
They definitely will. The next one is an activity. It's a STEM activity. It was a collaboration with our Digital Learning Specialist and classroom teachers, sixth grade science teachers. And it was all about a crew module. And what they needed to do was they needed to design a module that could transport their astronaut and have them re-enter back into Earth. So they got up on the ladder, they had the egg, they created whatever their module was, and they dropped them to see if they would survive coming back, re-entering the Earth's atmosphere or not. And it was great to see the kids really team together and work to create what they thought would protect their astronauts. So it was a great collaboration together.
One of the best pieces, I think, of voice and choice is our daily opportunities to meet with kids and walk through the classrooms. I always like to ask the students, what are you doing and why are you doing it? And what I'm hearing more and more is, well, I decided, or I chose. And I think that's such a testament to the work that teachers do with students, rather than like, oh, well, my teacher told me to read this, and then we have to answer questions. There's so much more of that individuality when I go from child to child. What are you doing and why are you doing it? And you hear that, I decided, I chose, I selected. And so that's, that's really exciting as we walk through the classrooms.
I think it really gives children an opportunity to show who they are, gives them an opportunity to take leadership skills, and then they start to facilitate their own learning. Yes, the teacher is there to guide them, but they really start to take control of their own learning. And they really then become expert learners, so we're very proud. That's just a sampling of many of the voice and choice activities at the Upper Elementary School. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any comments or questions from the board?
My comment on this one is I love the collaboration, both between the specialist teachers and the teachers of different disciplines and amongst the students themselves that you demonstrate in these activities. I think that's great.
I think it's really given an opportunity for a lot of co-teaching to happen. And I think it's good for the children to see that their learning isn't just in the classroom. Their learning can expand out into all aspects of their learning. So I think it's a great opportunity, and our specialists work very closely with our teachers. It's a great experience for the children.
I love when students have ownership of their learning, and in my classes, it's the same way. They have semester projects, and creativity is the number one requirement. And the things that, that students come up with, with the content is beyond anything that I, as a teacher, could dictate to them. And so I love seeing those example after example after example of students taking that, what they've learned, and creatively displaying it or working through it, and they won't forget. And I love, that dress is your favorite idiom. That is fabulous, right?
That's a cute one.
Tito.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, hold on.
I have something I would like to say, but I'm going to go off script a little bit. I think this might be the last time we see you here at the school board. And so I just want to say, thank you so much for your service to Merrimack. I mean, you've been here decades, decades. You were a teacher at the school, I think, when I was in the middle school.
I think so.
I, it's just, your contributions to this town and our kids and adults has, really is almost unparalleled. And I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, on a personal level. I've had three kids go through your school, and one of my kids had an issue. And I remember coming into your office, and I remember we had multiple meetings. And the last phone call was, you know, Mrs. Hardy, this isn't going to be the solution you want, but it's the best thing for your child. And I did not want to accept that, but I did, and you were right. And I was very grateful for your cand, your candidness with me, which is telling me, I know what's best, even though I'm her parent. You, you did know what was best, even more than I did in those moments. So that's something that I will always carry forward with me, and I still think it's your fault that I'm here because I remember one of those times you said, have you ever considered being on the school board? And here I am, so thank you so much. And Nikki, you have huge shoes to fill, but I know that you were going to do a phenomenal job, so just, we're so grateful for both of you.
I have had the most amazing mentor.
Oh, thank you. I always get very emotional. I guess, just quickly, I'd like to say that, you know, I grew up to believe I could do anything I wanted if I rolled up my sleeves and I worked really hard to get it done. And as I became an educator in 1975, forty-seven years ago, I knew that if I came to work every day, and I always thought, what's best for children? What's best for the children in my class, the children in my school, that I'd never go wrong. And in forty-seven years, I haven't, so Nikki, remember that. So Nikki, remember that. I know she does too. What's best for kids? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I just say thank you to all of you for your excellent leadership? And please thank your respective staffs for their outstanding job that they do throughout the entire year.
All right, we are going to move on to some really exciting information I know people are dying to hear about. And that is graduation plans and other high school information.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us.
Good evening.
I'm Steve Clare, the principal. Welcome, Naomi. I haven't met you before. Congratulations on school board. Hi, Caitlin. So we are here, we had requests that you wanted to get, you wanted an update on graduation and senior week. So Harley Hall and Liz Dumay and Angela Mazanca are here. They all have been working hard on graduation with us. So Harley's going to kind of take over the lead here and share what we have in place for a week from Saturday.
It is coming very quick. Good evening. Thank you for having us. I wanted to start tonight with covering senior week, which in 2022 will look like it did before 2020. So there are a number of things that we're going to be doing. I know graduation is the ultimate ending, but the week is full of activities for the seniors. I'm not going to go through every one of those, but as a quick list, that is what seniors are doing this next week, starting next Monday, is when that Monday schedule starts. So movies on Monday and Six Flags trip on Tuesday. Wednesday is a little light. Traditionally, students will do their own thing. Sometimes they go off in small friend groups, or sometimes they just sleep in, as they like to do. Even when there's class, they might like to sleep in. So no difference there. And there's some administrative stuff that happens on Wednesday as well, that they're not around for. Thursday marks the really big event. It's our formal cruise on Lake Winnipesaukee. So we charter the MV Mount Washington. Dinner DJ dancing. It is a little bit of a later night, so the students are more prepared than us at this point. And we'll be back later in the evening. Friday marks Hawk Walk, which if you've never seen Hawk Walk before here at Merrimack, it is one of those events that just really brings out the community. And so students will return to their elementary schools wearing full regalia, and they will walk the halls and meet their elementary teachers again and the current students. So it's one of those things that we've always done, but we have not been able to do for the past two years for obvious reasons. There are some administrative activities. Monday is senior sign-out, so they'll finalize grades, clear their accounts, make sure they have, you know, turned in all their library books, textbooks. And then Thursday and Friday. In addition to those things, we also have graduation practice in the morning. So that is the week leading up to graduation. And this very much mirrors what we've done in the past. Before I go any further, at the top, I have put the website. We put a website just for senior week and graduation. We flip live every spring. It is up and running. So usually from about spring break on, you can look on that and see up to date as it posts. Graduation itself will be on Saturday, the 18th, at 10 o'clock. Graduates are going to arrive at nine and report to the gym for lineup. And we will be practicing this on Thursday and Friday. It is a little bit like herding cats. Everybody's excited, but hopefully the two days of practice helps get this in order a little bit. We do encourage, for parents watching, that graduates get dropped off. Parking is a little bit of a premium on graduation. We will have Merrimack PD there in presence with traffic control and crowd control and so forth. But if they could drop off, that would help narrow that down. And when they arrive, they should wear all of their regalia. Please don't forget your cap. There's always a scramble every year for that. And 2022 does, oh yeah, and your tassels, please. Make sure the tassels are on too. And 2022 marks a return to our traditional graduation. It is all students entering the field at the same time. As tradition dictates, they will be led by junior marshals and the class advisors, and then we will walk in together. No more waves, as we saw in 2020 and 2021, which were dictated by the circumstances we were in, of course. We did have some lessons learned from COVID, so there are some positives that we are incorporated. We are going to be moving the stage a little bit closer. Exactly where on the field, we don't know. We've got to wait for the tents to get set up and see where we can make sure we don't have limited obstruction or obstructed views from the stands. So they will be closer. A couple other things that we've adopted is having our top 10 graduates, so the valedictorian and salutatorian, sitting in the front along with class officers. So those are the things that we did during COVID that we liked, and we've kept, even though we've gone back. And the good thing, the best part, there are no cap on graduates for the outside graduation, which is an extreme departure from the last two years, where we've had to cap it at 10 and 15 because of spacing. For those watching, there is reserved covered seating on the field underneath the tent, and there's some contact information there for Ms. Peyton, who can put your name down and make sure that you are taken care of on that eve, or on the morning of. And here's a, just a quick aerial part in the Google Maps, but this is where we're going to be. Traditionally, the grads will sit on and flank the stage in the middle. The covered seating is off to the west side, off towards the Everett-Turnpike side of the field with the band and chorus on the other. In the middle is faculty. Grads, as they walk up the stage, they make a big loop to get back to where their seat is. And so the faculty is there, and that kind of cartaguard through, walk all the way around back to their seats as we go through the graduation ceremony itself. The open general seating is in the stands up on the top. And so that is first come, first served when they do come in for the families. At the conclusion of the ceremony, students will toss beach balls, which is the custom here, as opposed to caps. And so at the conclusion of the ceremony, Mr. Clare will close the ceremony, and families will be then free to come down, meet their graduates. It's usually a photo free-for-all for a good 45 minutes or so. And professional photography will be available by Mark Lawrence. We just got those QR codes. We'll be sending those out this week, so parents can preview the website and see what the packages are available for Mark Lawrence Photography. But obviously, bring your cell phone cameras, bring your cameras, bring your professional cameras, bring any cameras you want, and bring them down to the field. It's well-earned by the graduates and the families. And that's where we're going to stop. That's where I wanted to present information. And what can field any questions you have?
I have a question. Heaven forbid rain, what contingency plan?
First contingency plan is, rain is not going to stop us unless it is torrential or it is lightning, thunderstorms, so forth and so on. The first contingency is, if it does look like that, the call will be made very early in the morning. Calls will go out via Power School, Channel 9, a reverse school messenger phone call. If that happens, the first alternate is a Sunday morning, same time, same agenda, just copy to paste it to Sunday for graduation. And usually, I'm not even going to say it, but let's just say that's the first contingency. The more extreme ones include an internal inside graduation in the gym with very limited seating. But that's usually the Sunday one is where we put the eggs. Two baskets, not just one.
Thank you.
Yes.
So this is, you know, the biggest event of the year. It's a very dignified experience. And it's really important that, first of all, our students know that this is their final expectation for us. And it's really important that they demonstrate all the way through senior week the core values that they've had. And then, I know last year there wasn't a rehearsal because of COVID, but then there wasn't enough seats for the graduates during the graduation ceremony. And so, you know, you just can't plan enough. But I know that will probably never happen again, but, you know, having those rehearsals is so important so that it goes perfect. It's perfect, there's always going to be something. It's Murphy's Law. I'm not saying that, there's that, I'm not putting that much pressure on you. But, you know, something like, there was all the seats over here, and there wasn't enough seats, and people were running chairs over. And I was like, "Oh, my goodness." But, you know, people were fine with it, but it was like, it just, I don't know.
To speak to that point, that happened at my UNH graduation as well. So I think Angela and Allison Huckins are both very attentive to detail. So I think that we will have the perfect number of chairs and probably extras, just in case. But to speak to what you said in regards to values and whatnot, Harley and I would like to commend the class of 2022 and the class of 2023 for their behavior. That was commended by all vendors at our recent prom. So I have no doubt that they, the senior class, will represent Merrimack well during their well-deserved senior week. Thank you.
And just to add on to that, we had our recent, our senior service day, and the number of positive comments that came from the community was pretty amazing. And I actually have been working on my address to the public. And, you know, one of the things that was said about the senior class was, you know, this was the classiest and kindest group of seniors they've seen in quite a long time. So I think we're going to be okay.
I just want to thank you both for being class advisors. I know it takes a lot of extra time, effort, and energy. And you both do a phenomenal job. I hear repeatedly about how both of you care so much about the kids in the classes that you mentor. And, you know, that's not a given. You know, you could just come and do your job and do it and go home and whatever. But you care deeply. And I know that you're also very active on social media, making sure that you answer parents' questions and stuff. And just, I know parents really appreciate it. I have heard your names said to me as, "Wow, they do a really great job." So just know that that doesn't go unnoticed, and we really appreciate your dedication to our kids.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Thank you for all the hard work. Sometimes people don't understand all of the work that goes into being class advisors, and all of the work goes into preparation for a very successful graduation. So thank you very much. And the students will remember you for decades, for the rest of their lives as their class advisors.
Thank you.
Shall I switch gears?
Yes, switch gears.
So we wanted to, just to get a little time, I contacted the school board maybe a week and a half ago, and we wanted to sit in front of you today to just try to get a student survey approved regarding our current schedule and, you know, whether or not it best serves the social and emotional and academic interest of our students and staff. So we put together, you know, some surveys that I sent out to you, I think, last night. And Angela Mazanca is here, and she's, you know, been active in looking at other school schedules for quite some time. So we're just, I'm going to turn it over to her, and she's going to review, you know, where we are right now and where we hope to be, you know, at the end of next year regarding this.
Hey, I'm An, do I have to push this? Sorry. I'm Angela, nice to see you all. I guess one of the things that we've talked about is how quickly the schedule for next year is made. We really have to finalize things by December. So every year, we're like, "Oh, it's too late to look at this. Oh, it's too late to look at this." And over the past couple of years, various staff have come to the building leadership team just suggesting changes to the structure of our school day that might better serve the needs of kids. And in thinking about it, our current schedule was adopted over 20 years ago, and there's been a lot of changes, both to our students' needs and the context of our district and our community. And we'd just like to collect some data from students and staff about how our current schedule's meeting their needs or if they have any things that they'd like to do differently. Steve sent an email to staff today saying, "This is a slow process, but we have to start with data. And so don't worry that we're making a change anytime soon. We just want to see what the needs are and what people's concerns are right now." So this first slide is really just a framework. You don't need to pay much attention to it other than to know that we really wanted to organize our thinking about what data we wanted to collect. And so this framework helped us write our survey questions by directing us to focus on the student need we were hoping to address. So our first statement was, "All students need access to all their content area teachers during the school day for extra help and remediation." And our second statement speaks to the possibility of increasing access to clubs and activities to help meet social, emotional needs. So this was just our organizing framework. And so we'd really like to just collect some data from staff and students about their access to extra help and extracurriculars and their perspectives on our current schedule. Both the student and the staff surveys are anonymous, and they have two parts. I'm going to talk about the first parts that are unique to each group, and then I'll talk about the second part that's in common for both of them. So the anonymous student survey, the first part, only has two questions. The first one is, when I needed help in, sorry, when I needed extra help in a class, they just check all of them that are true. So I was able to meet with my teacher during my lunch. I was able to meet with my teacher during a study hall or a skills center. I was able to meet with my teacher before or after school. I wasn't able to meet with my teacher because we couldn't find a time that worked for both of us, or I didn't need extra help. We were trying to think of all the possibilities that might be true for students. And then the second question is just a club or extracurricular activity participation. I participate in one or more clubs. I'd like to participate but can't meet after school, or I'm not interested. This one's really tiny, sorry. For teachers, we are trying to find out how often they're meeting with students during their prep time, during their lunch. Some of them have a study hall for a duty that maybe they're able to meet with students during that study hall duty before or after school. And one of the things that I know I'm concerned about right now as a classroom teacher is the end of the school year is like Friday, and I have students that really need some extra help, and we can't find a time to meet, so we're really struggling for that. So the question is, how often were there students who needed your help but couldn't meet with you due to your schedules? The second question is, have students expressed reluctance to meet with you during any of the following times when requested? We're mostly just trying to gauge, like, are there barriers to students meeting with teachers? So this is just another way to ask that question. With the club or extracurricular activity involvement, we're just trying to see, like, are they already advisors? Would they advise if it were during the school day? Not interested. They're not currently able to for other circumstances, just to try to gauge that. And then we're kind of curious about collaboration, just because here, we're trying to collect data to make good decisions to see, do teachers have time in the school day to review data to help them with remediation and extra help? So there's, I do have time in the school day to review data. I have time in the school day to develop common assessments with my role-like teachers. I have time to engage in learning for district initiatives, or I don't have time in my work day to collaborate. So we're just kind of curious how teachers would answer that one. And that's just an example of how it looked, not very exciting, sorry. The second part of the anonymous survey is very open-ended. They're all text boxes, so people can write as much or as little or skip them completely. So what do you like best? What are you afraid of losing if we change a schedule? What do you dislike? What would you like to get rid of if we change a school day schedule? What do you wish we had time for? And the last question, as I mentioned a couple of times, these are anonymous surveys, but we also want to encourage participation in committee work if we have it. So the last one is, they have the opportunity to type in their name if they'd like to be part of a committee that looks at the data. So I'm not sure.
I think I'd just like to add that, you know, we just recently completed our decennial NIES visit. And, you know, at the end of the NIES visit, the visiting team had a lot of accommodations, a lot of nice things to say about the school and the community. One of the things that was a concern or more of a question was, we have a newly developed growth plan, and they were concerned about our capacity to be able to fill that growth plan. So I think it's prudent to take a look at our current schedule and collect this data and then compare our, you know, collect the data and compare our schedule to other school schedules to see if we might make a slight tweak or change in order to be able to give us more time to fulfill, you know, the growth plan that was established in the NIES report. So any questions for us?
Questions or comments from the board?
So I really appreciate this. The school board has, you know, talked about researching how and why and different systems that we're using. And the process, you know, it takes three to five years to change, but we have to start with data. Change is hard work. There's a lot of resistance to change. And it's going to take vision and perseverance if you come to an idea that this is the direction that we think we need to go in and why. And so, you know, I encourage you to keep thinking about, you know, is there a lack of student engagement? You know, how come our high school dropout rate is what it is? And how can we better fit our system to meet the needs of all students? So I'm very encouraged by this, and I really do appreciate it. And finally, I just want to say, you know, Naomi and I got to meet with the to say, um, you know, Naomi and I got to, um, meet with the NEASK and so congratulations on the visit. And, um, you know, it, it was really positive for us to be able to have that and hear so many great things that are happening at the high school. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Jenna.
I'm also fully in support, you know, as a parent of two high school students. And knowing that the schedule hasn't changed since, you know, my sister went to school at Merrimack High School, it's absolutely time to look. Like you said, things have changed so much in, you know, 20 years. And it is absolutely the time to start looking at what can be, what changes can be made? What are the valuable changes that can be made? Um, 100% in support of this. And I'm really looking forward to what you find out and what you see as, uh, solutions to any problems that might crop up.
I did have one question. I, again, I'm with Jenna. I 100% support collection of this, this data and looking at what would work best for our students. Did you consider serving, surveying the parents? Because I know some parents, um, I've heard from just friends in the community and stuff, have opinions on changes they'd like to see in the school schedule. So tell me your thoughts on that.
So I included links in the PowerPoint to the staff survey and the student survey. And then I wasn't sure, I had one called extra slide, but it was actually a link to the parent and community survey. So I think it got deleted, thinking it was, uh, anyway, I mistitled it because I didn't know I'd need it. Um, do you think that it would be appropriate to have that second, that second part? Because I don't think parent, um, community members really have much to say about whether they were able to access extra help, like the students. But I think the second part of the survey, which is more open-ended, what would you be worried about losing? What do you wish there was time for? I'd be, I think that that would be really valuable data to gather from the parents and the community.
I would also, I would add that question because, again, just thinking through the last year, just talking to some parents, they know if their student was able to access their teacher or not. And, and so I would go ahead and ask that question. Were, was your student able to access their teacher before school, after school? Those same kind of questions.
So those two that went to the students?
Yes. I, I would still include those to the parents. And then yes, open-ended ones, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
I agree with that because as a parent, you know, I have a kid who would say, everything was super great. And I might have a different thing to say. Not that I don't think everything is super great, but I might have some more specific feedback that, um, one of my children wouldn't give you. Now, the other one's going to fill your survey with a lot of words. But I think that you will have kids that are like, you know, my child who won't, you know, who, who doesn't have anything to contribute. But I would have some things to say on that child's behalf, you know, that they might not think of to offer. So definitely, I love that idea to send it to the parents, yeah.
If I may, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Caitlin, but I'm just curious, um, you know, your perception of, of where you think we're going with this. Do you think this is a good idea?
Yes, but like it's, it's tricky because every student's very, very different. So it's a good idea to collect from all the students to make sure that you're hearing everyone's opinion. The only thing I would say from like a student point of view, which the parent opinions are very, very, very important, but I would say, take the student's point of view with the most weight because in regards to schedule, some things might work for a student that a parent doesn't realize, like is their personal need, if that makes sense? I don't really know how else to word that, but.
No, it makes a lot of sense. I'm, I'm glad I asked that question.
Any other comments, questions? Well, thank you very much for getting these surveys to us. And yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So we are actually hoping to administer these surveys prior to school ending. So is, is this the official, we can go ahead and move forward? Or how does this work?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you.
So I'll entertain a motion to accept the student and staff surveys as presented and the recommendation for, uh, it to go to the parents as well.
I would be happy to make that motion. I'll second it.
Seconded by Lori. And all those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
All right, moving on to the high school NEASK visit summary.
So I saw that on the, this, um, agenda today and I called Sandy Swanson and said, this is the first I'm hearing of it. So I was not prepared to present that tonight.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I see the new agenda.
Okay, all right.
So hang on. We have a request to conduct dissertation research.
Yes, so we, uh, we have an email from Toni Arnold, who is a doctoral student at Riviera University. Toni is here. Um, as you know, that would require a vote. If you are in favor of her conducting the research, uh, it's interesting, it would be interesting for us to find out how that might benefit the Merrimack School District, our students and our staff.
Thank you.
Toni?
Go ahead. Yes, please.
Okay, great.
There you go.
All right. Um, so I think everybody has my letter available to them, but my study is a correlational study. It's focusing on self-compassion, trait mindfulness and burnout in human service professionals in the school setting. So it's three separate survey measures. They're all pulled into a survey monkey, so it can all be completed online. It'll take about 18 minutes to complete. Um, at the end, they're offered an opportunity to enter a gift card raffle if they want to. Um, but all data will be kept anonymous. Only adults, like the faculty, those who are working in direct contact with students and providing services will be eligible to complete the survey. Um, so yeah, I guess sort of the, the timeline. So what, if, if I receive permission from the Merrimack School District, I would have to submit an amendment to my IRB application and get permission to send this survey out. So that would happen sometime over the summer. So it would likely start in the fall when school starts up and then hopefully close it out by December of the, the end of this year. I'm hoping to get around 100 participants. I would cap it at 150.
So we just, we just received this tonight. So
Oh, okay.
I would personally not want to vote on this until I had a chance to read through the entire survey. And then my question would be, once you've got the data, you know, how is that going to benefit the Merrimack School District?
Right. So something I'm offering is if my findings are significant, sharing them with the schools that are interested in that information and then going from there. If findings are significant, that's suggestive of variables that might be moderators of burnout, which could be helpful for staff and faculty because that could inform interventions that we could use either to prevent or to alleviate burnout.
The, the information you would share afterwards, is it of the, all the data from all the, from your whole study, like all the different schools? Or would we receive data specific to like our school, our district?
So I guess that depends on what the school prefers. I could probably separate, separate it out if you wanted to see specifically how your school district was answering, just to get a better sense of what's going on for them. But I could also include all the data, just so you could see what's going on across several school districts.
I think a side-by-side comparison would be helpful
Right.
for us.
Okay.
I agree with Lori. I'd like to take a deep dig, deep dig into the, dig deep into this, sorry. Uh, so could we put this on our old business item for our next school board meeting in two weeks?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good time. All right, high school library renovation update.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we had spoken about this, uh, before in, in prior board meetings. But just as a reminder, um, all the, uh, the libraries have been updated within the last, probably around 10 years or so, maybe eight years. Starting with Master Cola Elementary School, then we went to Thornton's Ferry, then we went to Reed's Ferry. The middle school, of course, was, is the modern library because the school was built in 2004 and it still is of a design that's, that's functional and, and works and really looks good. But the last one really on our list, we did J M U S, too. Last one really on our list has been the high school. So we had mentioned this a few meetings ago. Just want to let you know that, uh, the, the trustees have, have funded that project. All the material is, is now on order. Uh, we're going to have a relocated circulation desk. So when you walk in, we have plans, but we're not ready to show them to you yet. Because when we show you something, we want to show you pictures, video, walkthrough, everything like that. We want to give you the full experience. So we're waiting. But we're going to redesign the circulation desk. It's no longer be on the left-hand side as you walk in, kind of like as a gatekeeper. But it's going to be, be in like in the, the center. It's kind of a, a resource that people can come up. So that's a really good design change. Uh, we're also going to be dropping some power poles in, in different locations because all the kids have devices now, right? And if you can't, if you don't have an outlet near you, if you don't have, then you're, you're kind of out of luck. And so we have to change that. So we're working a lot with, um, Tom Toussot on that, uh, Jason Pelletier, um, Jessica Gott, Steve Claire. All those people have been absolutely amazing. This has been well over probably, I would say, a year in the, in the planning of it. Uh, we're going to do some painting to kind of freshen things up. Uh, the carpet is still in good shape. So we're going to put that off until the next budget year, the next budget cycle that we want to do, which is okay because a lot of the stacks that are coming now are of different shapes and can be moved readily easily, as opposed to those static stacks that we have right now. So it's, it's not going to be a, an arduous process to, to relocate the furniture and do a brand-new carpet once we get everything down and in. Plus, supply chain stuff with carpeting, with furniture. We're hoping the furniture's going to come in. The furniture may be late. The carpet may be late. And it was kind of one of these decisions, well, let's just focus on the furniture, try and get all that stuff in and get all the electrical work done and get everything that we need as far as, you know, internet access and any other things that we need to make this, uh, a successful project. But it, it is going to look, uh, it's, it's going to be really nice and you will, you will be impressed. So I've been impressed with the work that they've done and the, uh, the drawings that I have seen and some of the color choices that they made. It's going to look pretty, pretty nice. So something to be proud of and something to look forward to. And something that we really kind of need with this and the other projects, uh, maybe a school start date of October 1st bill. Do you think we could manage that? And give me the month of September to button these things up? I'm only kidding, wherever the camera is. But the summer is never long enough for people who have to do things in the summertime. Um, I'm getting a little off track, but hey, it's my agenda item. I can go for it, right? You know, the computer work that has to have happen from the, from the RIT department, every machine has to be touched and cleaned and, and refreshed and modified and everything like that. And, and then all the maintenance work that has to be done, you know, the removal of all the furniture from the classroom, everything done, everything put back, hallways done. It's just an amazing amount of work that we have to do. And then, you know, we have a $1.2 million warrant article to replace the roof at Thornton's Ferry, too. So, you know, we'll just kind of get that, that done on the side while all these other things kind of happen. So, and then we have a couple of things that we haven't really discussed, but they're very important also that we want to have happen during the summertime. So yeah, we need a longer summer. But, you know, I'm not looking at the man with the tie. I'm just, you know, just. Work second shift, yes. They, actually, a lot, most of them do. So that's my, my high school, uh, library, um, update. Uh, if you want me to just slide right into Thornton's Ferry? That'd be fine?
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, Thornton's Ferry, boy, I want to tell you, you know, Kim DeMurr's and Rachel Papke and all the superstar powerhouse parents of Thornton's Ferry have come through and raised a, a lot of money for this playground. All the design work is, is, is finished. There was a, a site meeting, uh, Thursday morning, which I convened and then things would have it. I couldn't attend, but I had confidence in the people who were there. Tom Toussot, um, Mike Helvatsis from CSSI is going to do all the site work for that job. You had Kim and Rachel and they're going to do, whatever Kim and Rachel say, it's going to get done. We had the playground rep there. Everything was, came together well. Tom Toussot gave me an update and, uh, Rachel sent me a little email. Everything is, is going to be on track. Everything is ordered. Uh, we have a little help from the trustees, but mainly it's, uh, the parent volunteers at Thornton's Ferry School who have done an amazing job of planning this over the course of a year or more and raising the funds. And the district, as you recall, did raise an appropriate $30,000 in the operating budget to take care of the site work. So any work that CSSI does to level the site, we're going to take care of some drainage issues, too. They really aren't part of the playground project, but while we're there with the earth-moving machines, we might as well take care of it. So there's going to be a couple of side benefits, too. And it's going to look spectacular. So we'll bring you photos and videos of that when it's all done. We're looking forward to that. It's a couple of exciting things that are happening this summer. But I'm sure it'll have its periods where, oh my gosh, I can't, this, if this piece of equipment doesn't fit here, but we looked at it 25 times. Why is that? Now, maybe it won't, maybe it will, who knows? But, uh, it's all exciting anyway. It's part of the adventure that we call summertime at Central Office. So, um, that's my update on the, uh, the playground. So we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
It's going to be awesome come the fall.
It is.
All these things are going to be wonderful for the students.
And it always works out that way.
It does. It always does.
It does. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. So, uh, I will move to the New Hampshire School Board Association Call for 2022 Resolutions. And I'm going to actually lump this together with the delegate assembly. Uh, in our packets are the resolutions that were adopted at the last delegate assembly. For those of the, those of you in the public that do not know, we are members of the New Hampshire School Board Association. That provides us, um, a platform for advocacy and they are on top of all legislation that affects school districts. They also provide services to us as well. Uh, for example, they allow school districts to be, bring resolutions to them to advocate with our legislatures. They provide legislative updates, those kinds of things. So along with this call for resolution, the resolutions, uh, we can agree as a board, if we want to bring one together, there's a format. Uh, they do have to be submitted by July 15th. So if there's something that you want to discuss after looking at these kind of resolutions, if our leadership has any resolutions they would like to bring to the board, we would need to do that at our next meeting to get that in by the July 15th deadline. The reason is the delegate assembly is in October of this year. It's not being delayed for COVID. So, uh, that's why all the, any proposed resolutions have to be brought by in July. And they will, um, they're board of directors and the delegate assembly will vote on whether they will support those or not. Do I have any questions on those two items? And in the, in the board packet that is online are these kind of resolutions. So if you're new to the New Hampshire School Board Association in the public, I encourage you to take a look at the kind of things that, um, they do vote on and the kind of resolutions that come before them. All right, do we have any other new business? Seeing none, we, uh, do we have any policies? I don't see any on our agenda. Then we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the May 16th, 2022, public and non-public minutes. I will entertain a motion to accept those minutes. Moved, uh, so moved by Jenna, seconded by Naomi. Any comments or questions?
This is, this is kind of, I don't know if it's nitpicky or not, because this is the first time I've done this. Um, on page four at the bottom, um, discussion about the motion to rescind the masks policy. Um, I, I don't feel like the sentence about, uh, my question conveyed what I intended it to convey. And I'm not sure if that's because I said it wrong in the meeting, or if it was an, an error in transcription. But, um, the sentence reads, "A board member halter asked if it made sense to have an affirmative policy that affected the ability to wear masks." And what I meant by that was, um, I would like to change that word affected to protected. I, I wanted to, I was asking a question about protecting the ability to wear masks so that students aren't being discriminated against for a choice to wear masks, or being told that they cannot wear masks. Um, so I was wondering if, if I said it wrong, or if it makes sense to change that word, or if that's something we can even do.
We can look back at the minutes and see how exactly that you said it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I didn't even think of that. I should have gone and watched, you watched the video. Right, right. No, it's, it's, yeah, my- Right, right. No, it's, it's, yeah, my, my, yeah, I guess my question is. I think I said protected. That's what I intended to say.
It's in, it's in the discussion.
I'll go look at it. I totally spaced when I was reading it this afternoon that, oh, I could go watch the video and see what I actually said.
So we can hold on, on accepting these minutes once we've.
Okay.
Done that work.
Perfect. Thank you.
Uh, we can accept, uh, we can take a motion for the non-public. So moved. Seconded by Lori. Uh, point of order, we need to rescind the prior motion. And that's why, Jen. Thank you. Prior motion is rescinded. Now I will accept a motion for the non-public.
I move to approve the non-public minutes.
Moved by Naomi, seconded by Lori. All those in favor that, uh, are, would like to vote, say aye. Three, uh, against and abstain, one, three zero one. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Kimberly.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have some resignations and retirements to, uh, share with you. From the MTA resignations, we have Jennifer Levine, a math teacher at Merrimack Middle School. We have Abby White, grade one teacher at Reed's Ferry School. We want to thank the following support staffs for the, for their service and for the, their years of service and, um, wish them well. Lynn Spencer has been a para educator for 25 years at J Mews. Laura Palm, para educator for 20 years at Master Cola Elementary. Janet Bogle, para educator 13 years at Reed's Ferry School. Paula Enos, administrative assistant for 27 years at Merrimack Middle School. Karen Sapienza, para educator 15 years at Merrimack High School. Linda Mayo, a para educator 16 years at Reed's Ferry School. And Rennie Bullio, Bullio, is that how you say it? Maintenance 38 years, just Rennie, our buddy, our buddy Rennie.
Yeah, Rennie, yeah.
38 years, thank you very much. Very nice. Um, and then we have a fair number of nominations, teacher nominations. Cassidy Downs, grade four at Thornton's Ferry Elementary. Deborah Desay, behavior specialist, Reed's Ferry Elementary. Megan Smith, kindergarten teacher at James Master Cola Elementary. Cara Jutress, grade two teacher, James Master Cola Elementary. Sarah Gulmet, special ed teacher, Merrimack Middle School. Morgan Bailey, special education teacher at Thornton's Ferry School. Kimberly Morgan, science teacher at Merrimack Middle School. Lisa Martin, library media special at Thornton's Ferry Elementary. Sherry McKenzie Burbank, out-of-district coordinator for Student Services. And Andrea Inomorati, grade one teacher, Reed's Ferry Elementary School.
Any administrator nominations on the consent agenda?
Well, we, we, uh, excuse me, I will, I'd prefer to talk with you in non-public about our existing administrative staff, okay?
Then I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Jenna. Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor, say aye, four, four zero zero. All right, moving on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Lori.
So I had the pleasure of going to the Parks and Rec meeting, and, um, they are all ready for the Fourth of July celebration. And they are still looking for certified lifeguards, if anyone would like to lifeguard this summer.
All right, correspondence.
I had one, uh, who had, um, concerns about the lack of availability of gym space in the summer. So it's very interesting that Matt would, um, tell us how crazy it is trying to get our schools prepared. And, um, we just, we, we are not like a school district like Nashville that has three sets of administrate, you know, um, maintenance crews cleaning all summer. We have one, so, um.
We have one and we have, you know, we have some floors that need to be stripped and refinished too. You know, and, and sometimes, um, even at the middle school, you know, even because it's, it's air-conditioned. I remember, you know, thank goodness that we replaced the floor at, um, J Mews, the all-purpose room, to be that kind of a, a laminate sort of configuration. Because there was one summer where it was so humid, I think it took a month and a half before the thing dried. And even at the beginning of school, it was kind of like, you could just kind of hear the shoes on it and just kind of wincing a little bit. So it's, it's, it's challenging, you know, to get those ready.
All right, comments. Lori.
So I, I just want to congratulate a lot of our students who are here tonight and thank our, um, little band who came and played for us. Uh, a couple of things, I had the, um, great opportunity to go to the Reed's Ferry Art Show the other night. And, uh, it was really wonderful. I saw, um, you know, Tom, Paul McCally, the town manager, town councilors there. Frank Hoyle, the former principal.
Really?
Goes every single year, he said. And again, it was, you know, I think I, uh, have a lot of experience in walkthroughs and walking through that building. It, there is just so much love in that school. And, um, you know, some of my favorites, there was high levels of creativity, but there was turtles and caterpillars and sunflowers and, uh, just a huge array of creativity and talent. So congratulations to the Reed's Ferry Art Program and, and Bonnie for all that they do. As a side note, um, I questioned, if you remember, the police officer whether it was needed for parking. Well, let me tell you, there was hundreds of people there. I could not believe how many people. There was no parking, so thank goodness Officer McGuire was there. I agree in the detail, evidence-based again. And, uh, so, uh, it was great.
And I was waiting tonight and everything that we saw tonight was so wonderful. I just want to tell Reed's Ferry how much I appreciated the personal card, the, the handmade card that I received. I would have loved to have been there. My son had a playoff baseball game that night, so I was unable to attend. But that was just so precious that that card was sent to the board.
I totally agree with you. It made my day.
Yeah.
Ditto.
Any other comments from the board?
Um, just piggybacking off of that, I would love, you know, it never really occurred to me to go to the Reed's Ferry. And I had, I don't remember what I had that night, but I couldn't go either. But it would be awesome if, I don't need a hand-colored invitation every time, but it would be awesome to just know of those things, like even just, hey, school board, here's some things that you could go to this, I mean, I probably know more than the average school board member. I don't know. You, I don't know, you all are pretty involved, but, I mean, because I have kids, but involved, but I had no idea. And it was really nice to get that invitation and nice to know, like, hey, like, not only are we having this, we'd love for you to come. And it was just special. I don't know, I liked it.
I, I agree with that. I, I'm really linked into the middle school and high school activities, and I know what's going on there. But, but the elementary school, I have fewer friends now with elementary kiddos and my kiddos, well, my youngest just graduated Saturday. So, yeah, just those special art nights and concerts and those things, I would just love to, to attend.
Yeah, just I'd echo those comments for the J Mews, uh, art festival which took place about a week and a half ago. It was absolutely fascinating.
We got to see in person some of those, uh, things that were up on the pictures. I recognized that, that, what was it, the breakfast, paper mache breakfast. I saw it in person. They, they looked amazing.
It was amazing, yes.
All right, moving on to public comments on agenda items. Come join.
Hi, the room was full. Now it's not. Um, good evening. Heather Robitaille, 45 Springfield Circle. I just wanted to express my heartfelt gratitude to our administration, to our educators for, not only their focus on keeping our students safe, which we hate how much that comes to the forefront so often, but I feel truly blessed to be in a community where we're really close-knit, where there's great communication to parents, um, about what is going on. I've been involved in a number of school events and I understand all the work that they put into to make sure that our students are safe, that, um, people are appropriately background-checked for the different, um, involvements that they're having in the schools. But beyond the safety, I really appreciate how much everyone in our district nurtures and really helps develop our kids. I loved hearing about the voice and the choice. And this is the first time, I think, I almost cried during a school board meeting, um, but hearing the song and just seeing the pride and how these students could communicate better and more effectively than some of us do at times was just really amazing. And I just, I appreciate all the work to everyone out there and to all the parents who volunteer to at events to make things happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to our non-public session. So moved. Moved by Naomi.
Second.
Seconded by Jenna. All those in favor? Aye, four zero zero. Thank you and good night.